All right, welcome to the town act and planning board meeting for June 1st, 2023 at 6:00 PM.
I'll stand for the pledge.
Let me specify, the United States of America, in the two third public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Adam, you're gonna vote tonight? Put you as the all day?
On what I can, yes.
Yeah, okay. Did everyone get a chance to review May 18th's meeting minutes? Do we have enough people to vote on? Now you wanna table them?
Well, I don't. I think we need...
Yeah, we can't, we're gonna have to table the minutes.
Table these?
We have to table the minutes.
Alright. Table them. Alright, first up is Brian Perry, 668 13th Street, map 143 lot 034, application for greatest practical extent.
Good evening. Just, my name is Steve Olson, Norah Plains, on behalf of Glenn, who's in charge of the plan. With me tonight is Brian and Bill Ryan, and his wife, Sandra. We're here to answer any questions you may have after the site walk.
Do you have anything? I don't have anything more. You're on here, so.
Over there.
Alright. What do you think, John? Is the garage going up this year too? Okay.
So the garage, with that being said, the garage is not part of this application. The application at hand is the house, because that's what falls within the 100 feet. So, our concern right now is the greatest practical extent on the primary, on the dwelling of the house.
And moving it back, is it an option? Why?
The main concern, the primary concern is that the garage, for the design, it's the limitation between those two structures. And the other aspect is we're trying to keep within that existing footprint as much as possible, as opposed to shifting any.
It's a daylight basement, is that why?
Yeah.
You'd have to...
He's looking to have a daylight basement. He's hoping. We'll use those words.
It's on a wish list.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it has a...
So, Ryan, you didn't go there. Behind the house is all flat ground. He's on, he's, his house right now, the deck, the edge of his deck is where it starts to crown down and head down a pretty steep slope. You can look at the contours, that's where it kinda shows you. Right now, it's just pretty much a crawl space, I would say, underneath the house, right?
Yes.
Yeah. He's looking to put a full foundation on it, where it will sit a little bit higher, and allow for that that walkout. So you have your, your 10-foot side back, your side right here, if we look at this, how come you can't shift the garage max out that 10 feet and then pull this house back? So that it's parallel with that corner?
And then you... The question is, then I'd be moving the driveway and everything over to shift to that as well. So right now, the plan was to keep that existing driveway as best as possible. And then the other concern is, is the question is, so, I mean, it's not on this permit, but I, I need a well. And the plan is to have a point well, and I need some access to be able to get. And if I, if I move the garage too far over, I'm gonna be limited that way, right? In terms of how much space to get around to anything in back of the house.
You're doing it, drilling a well?
Drilling a well, yeah.
And where's the well, you're gonna drill, where's it going?
I think I heard it. In this area?
Yeah, it'd be in that area. Cause the septic, they're trying to get away from the septic, and there's the, the owner across the side, they're well close to that across from the area.
How far off would that be from the septic?
Roughly.
How far will it be?
I think he's allowed, the state will allow it down to like 60 feet with a variance. 60 to 80, I can't quite remember off that one off the top line.
Is that thing from the septic?
Was there something you needed?
At that point, you're about 85 feet.
Why wouldn't you drill the well before you built the garage?
Well, we, we will, but if there's any work that has to be done, right? That, if that garage is over, then any work that has to be done in back of that house for any reason is, would be a problem with that restriction.
As it sits in this drawing, what's the clearance between the garage, the proposed garage and the house now?
This thing, I...
Four feet to five feet.
I think it was fine.
Right now, we have it at five feet.
Okay.
And sliding the house back and attaching it to the garage is not an option?
Well, right, well, part of the design, I mean, right now, the issue, so first of all, the house design does not, does not attach the rocks, we change the design of the house, and we change the garage. But the other aspect is, when any company comes from the driveway, that's what they're gonna walk through that gate to the, to the water, not going through the house or the garage.
Say that again?
So, just when company comes, right now, right, we don't have the garage there, but when company comes, they park in the garage, they park in the driveway, right? And you walk down to the lake. If we put a, attach, if we attach those two things, that's gonna change the design of the house, and anybody that comes to visit is coming through the house to go to the lake.
Can't walk around the other side of the garage?
Well, that's, we would change, so aesthetically, it, correct. If you, we change the aesthetic, it'd be walking towards the neighbor's house to go look around, to come down the water, right? That would be the, the solution. Not aesthetically what we wanted.
So right now, you have 14 feet on this corner in front of the 100? Cause you're, you have, you said your porch is eight feet?
Correct, correct.
And so, six and eight, yeah, and then...
Yeah, as we were trying to think, originally, I was talking to somebody, can move it south, but then that puts even more within the 100 feet. So that didn't work.
Right now, the layout is at 30%. And we meet the requirements of DEP and town regulations.
And here's another question for you, and I know you got this patio right here, but how come the house can't shift this way a little bit and then backwards? And that would give you your walkway? Your walk, your gate? If you came towards...
Well, that's, so that, that's, what we're working through is can we shift a little bit to the south, right? But what that's doing is it's pushing more of the footage into the 100 square feet.
And we'll be over the 30%.
What are you at the top of, how far are you in the 100 foot at the top corner?
Yeah, but if you, if you go south and then
Back.
And then back towards the 13th Street a little bit more.
I, I, I mean, if you, if you go, you go back five feet, you don't have that much room to work in between those two. I mean, I can give it a, as mentioning, where that back line is. You know, I think with the five feet, I can move it back one more foot, right? And that's four feet to the garage.
That'd be four feet to walk between.
Right, so that, that would be sufficient for walkway, we'd take it off another, you know, foot off the 100.
Tip, just to give you a perspective, a typical door in your house is 30 inches, three feet max, so you're not giving yourself a lot of room between the two structures to walk, get lawnmower, get your grill, patio furniture. So five feet is more of an ideal walk around.
Why wouldn't you walk around the other side of the garage?
Closest point of proximity, everybody walks the closest point of proximity. You walk around, go towards the house, you walk down the patio there, versus going right around the garage and further away in order to get down to it.
I mean, generally, my plan is I have, I know it's not gonna be, that's not my problem, I have two boat trailers, they can go in the side there on the grass, right, in the season. So it can be very difficult to have a lot of people walking around with the boat trailers there.
Where's the 100, if, if, we talked about moving south and back a little bit, where's the 100-foot line on the south side here?
It's, it's right here, goes right, right behind the LP tank.
Okay.
So the further south you move, the more you hold the line.
Give you a little zoom in here, John. So this has a six here, and the existing deck is eight feet, so this is, this is the proposed porch. So you're at, you know, like I was just saying earlier, 14 feet versus, you know, 16. I'm actually, is this, is this six? Do you happen to know if that's the whole wall right there, or if that's just what's in front of the...
No, that's the whole wall.
Okay, so you're, you're at more of four?
Well, he's at 12 feet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think we take him up on the one foot offer. So it's no closer than 87.
89.
39, 8. Move it back a foot. To shrink that gap between the garage and the house. It doesn't matter, no, I'm just thinking.
Talk to your board. Garageed over a little bit more, and then moved the house back. See, I don't know, five feet?
Again, we'll be ripping up the existing driveway and redoing the whole driveway entrance. And right now, we're trying to line it up with the driveway that's already there, and not having to change any driveway setup or anything else. Just keeping the natural flow of it's already existing.
I get it, it's all, it's all good reasons for why the things are where they are.
I say take the one foot, but I'm only one guy. You clearly have some issues with it.
No, it's just, you know, I, I get the convenience of it all and stuff, but...
It's not a perfect situation, for sure, but...
When there's room to move, there's room to move. That's just my personal opinion.
I agree.
Can't just settle on something out of convenience. I don't think.
You got a motion now? And if you and Chris agree, what's, what do you want, what's the proposal?
What are you thinking?
I'd like to, I'd like to see if the, if the garage can be rearranged. I mean, yes, I know, you know, moving it over five feet, that's not, I don't think that's gonna really affect the driveway a whole lot. Is it convenient? No, but I think, I think by doing that, and then allowing that to shift the building, the main house back, I think is... The existing driveway is what, gravel?
Yeah.
And per the regulations, we're allowed to go up to that 30%. That's all we're trying to do, is adhere to the regulations.
Well, this is for greatest practical extent, and that is to move you as far off the water as the board deems, you know, so yes, you're allowed your 30%, right?
Yeah, we're not arguing about that, it's the location.
Yeah, so I get your, what you're saying, but they're also trying to figure out, why can't the structure go back further?
Is there any position in the, I mean, if you look, look at that property, when you guys have walked it, right? See the topo? So I have a half an acre where more than half of it is down there. Granted, I bought it, I, I bought it as is. And we're trying to move up here permanently. I've got a flat spot for this property, which is less than half of the property I own. I am one of the few houses up on the hill on 13th Street. Most of them have, the camps and the rebuilds are all within the 25, if not 75 upstream. To me, I think we've been trying to make accommodations to stay within the 30, to respect the 100, right, of what we're doing, I hadn't do anything else down, protected the shoreline. I'd like to have a house that I'd like to move in here permanently, relocate to. If I can't make this work, I'm gonna have to figure out what other options are. I mean, I know it's an appeal, right? But, you know, as I'm moving the garage as it is, look at the site, that shed, okay, that's gonna have to move, you can't get in the, you can't get in the garage with the shed there, so then the shed has to, has to move, and then that driveway, those trees would come out, and I'd move the, how do you get into the driveway that way? So I'm losing my flat space by moving more of this. So it's an appeal, I understand it, you know? But I, you know, feel I'm fairly respectable within the 100, and have very minimal going within that 75 and, and 100 foot on a lot of this hill.
Do you have, they're like the real pictures of it?
I do. So this is the south, southern side?
Yeah. You don't have one of the driveway, huh?
Probably not, cause this is about the structure. The driveway is where this car is parked, but it's not, obviously.
What were the trees on the side of the driveway? That's what I'm trying to remember, to be honest.
Maplewood and pine. They weren't very big, were they? No, those, those are shrubs, those are shrubs, they're in the front, if you look at, see where that shed is?
Yeah, it's on the back side of the shed, right?
No, no, it's in the front side, on the roadside.
Okay.
So the, I don't know, I don't think I could pull from my phone for you, but...
That's the problem. For times, there's room to move it back. You know? We just gotta figure out a good way to get it back. How far are you thinking, would you wanna see it back?
Yeah, yeah.
Just gotta figure out how far.
And what's the best option? Move it, move it down, south, and then back? Hold the garage?
More some combination of both, it's worth the difference.
That's the other option. Two and a half, three feet this way, two feet down. And then shift it back. You don't have much room to go south. Looks like you might have...
I just don't think of the shrub, you're not sure.
Three feet, that gives them seven feet off the 10 foot step back. That puts them at eight feet. So you're gaining, what? Nothing to shift it back. And have the walkway, I think.
Don't talk to me.
Well, now you're, you asked.
Well, I just was pointing it out, you've gotta be careful going south.
Well, I know.
You don't wanna end up with more of the house in there.
Right. Well, it's move them three feet south, move the garage two feet, and then move the house back. Would that give you or something to that effect?
And so, go towards the south setback and then backwards?
Yeah, this way, garage up a little, and move it back.
How far?
Well, that's what we gotta figure out.
You don't have to move it south too far to have to really kick it west to get it out of that.
Right. And that way, if you build the garage up, move that back, you're moving it more out. How far would you wanna see it? I know what you're thinking though.
How, how far is the front of the garage from the center of 13th Street?
It's 50, right now, it's 50 feet, that setback right there.
This is his building envelope, is what, this, this, this...
Got you. Yeah, so even the house? If that's, that's...
Solid lines, the building envelope, to the south of the house?
That right there, yeah.
So...
It just, it doesn't work, we'd have to move it too far west, it'd be outside of the building envelope to bring it south.
And if you move the garage up, that's the other...
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You're here. Taking book from each side.
This is what they're trying to figure out right now. That's the sheet that we work with. It's just the first, it's just the top one, the rest of it's just packet.
But... Give and take a little on each side.
That's my opinion.
And then move it, how about how far though? We gotta get it.
What are your thoughts on do, so I know you wanna maintain that space between the two structures, simply for walkthrough. What are the thoughts on simply having a man door on the back of the garage? You know, I know, I mean, your concern was having guests, you know, be able to easily get from the front of the garage, or inside the garage, or whatever, back to the patio area. It seems to me, you know, you could even put a
Garage door.
You could even put a five-foot double door back there, if you wanna get, you know, law equipment through, or something like that. That would maintain your, you know, your ability to get, you know, through that structure into the backyard.
And that was one maybe, that's what we discussed, is what is a, what now? No, we have the park, you know, it's cool less than this, right?
Sure.
And we're not having people walk into the garage to get to the back of the house, right? So it's not a, of a non-starter.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to come up with some ideas to help.
The other, we, you know, trying to do attach it, right, and then, that even getting a whole nother kettle of fish relative to redesign the house, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, so Jason, if you could point to the, see that shed, right up, see the other side of the roadside and that shed? So right, that whole section is tree.
Okay.
That's what I was talking about, so those trees, so if we move everything over, those trees, and everything is, it would be coming out, right? And then I don't know what the heck would, you know, problem. So moving that shed, moving the garage that much that way just changes the whole, what I'm gonna do at the front.
How does moving the garage change the trees on the roadside of the shed?
So, so right now... Yeah, if you, where you, where Jason had the mouse before, on the other side of the shed, that is, basically think of it as, it's trees.
Right.
So there's no, that shed's not exposed to the road.
Right.
Right, so all the trees are there. So if we move this garage, you can't, you can't get into the, so right now, the way that is, that, that left bay, when you look into the garage... that, that left bay, when you look into the garage, you're going to be angling, right? But the good news is the garage door, right, you have some room. If that shed moves over much further, then you gotta come in the driveway and turn into the garage and then straighten out. So well, it, it, right, so we have to figure out how to straighten out that whole corner, and then figure what we're going to deal with, this rattle section over here in the garage.
Okay. What if you were to take the garage and twist it a little bit? So that the, that back corner, right where the arrow is, move that corner back towards the line, then you would have more of a, more space down on the lower side to move the house back. Then you wouldn't have to rearrange, you, you know, you, the driveway basically would stay the same.
I just, I just need to look at it, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, typically from an architectural standpoint, you try to have buildings in same direction. You don't try to catty-corner it and make it all look dysfunctional and disorganized when you line up buildings. Try to make them all in some sort of alignment. You start twisting one, and you're gonna start questioning, why did they do that? Doesn't, doesn't look right when you drive by it. So if you look at the neighboring garage, it's in the same line. You kind of look at the flow of everybody's houses, and they try to line everything up.
What's magic about the size of the garage? Two-car garage?
It's a two-car, but I'm a woodworker. In retirement, I need the space in the upstairs and the tools. So the combination of those two, plus, you know, the motorcycle storage. The dimensions on it were, right, to try to shrink it when...
Is there any part of this that you are flexible on?
Well, I would, I was...
I mean, we're trying to work with you as well.
So when we came at this, the reality is, we're dealing with what we have, right? Which is, less than half of our property is usable, right? And so, that's where, from a design perspective, right? We try to keep within the 30%. And originally, we actually tried to make it 1,500 square feet. And we couldn't. And the reason was, we tried to do done, all the things, right? And that's why it became this, it became bigger than when we started. So that's where we're at, where we're at. And so, the flexibility was, you know, come back to one foot. I think we have another, another foot or so to give on the other part. But I, I can't move this thing all off 100. It's not gonna, right? So I've got a couple feet to play with, but not much more. Otherwise, I've got to go back to the architect, or architect with the drawing board. And we've been at this so many times, I'm like, I don't know if we're gonna do it, because it's just too, right? We tried to work a design of a, of a house that we could retire in.
Sure.
Right, on the property we have. And we think we have it. We think we have the design, and we just tried to, you know, we even shrunk, originally we had a larger porch, and then we didn't have the 30%, so we shrunk, we shrunk that deck down to make, to make that work, right? So that's where we've been struggling, was to make sure we complied with what we could, and we tried to keep it within that, you know, existing footprint as best we could.
Did I hear you just say you might get two feet?
Yeah, I think, well, we have five, right? So if that, that five come down to four, right? So, so right now, um, like, the, the back of the house has... Right, so we're, right now, we're a foot shot of the current foundation, right? So the minimum, go back, we should, okay there. It's the, I think we're at the two feet is the max, is what I was talking to Glenn, that we have to play with, that's before it becomes totally unusable. Right, that, that separation would be a fire code, it would be a problem. So, unless, I don't know if that's...
I would say the one foot is about where you want to go in order to give yourself the ability to walk between the two structures.
And you wouldn't shift the garage one foot to get your, back to your... You know what I mean?
I'd have to go, I mean, I'd have to go look at what, how much room we have there. Because that's, I was eyeing it the other day, I'm like, because that's...
Shift the garage.
Going through, I'm like, okay.
If you were willing to give two feet, and then shift the garage one foot, then that puts you right in the same situation that you said you could, you'd be at four feet, right, between that, between the two structures?
I think right now it's five, so we shift it to one foot, gets you down to four. Shift it another foot, gets you down to...
And then shift the garage up one more, to the sideline one, that brings you back to four.
So Jason, I'm gonna have to figure out the garage shifting. Because when I lined up right now, I was actually, the garage was actually past where the driveway is now. It's, you know, behind the shrub. And, but the, the fortunate part is the garage doors, right, are inside, right? So I, you know, that doesn't really matter, you can drive right in. If you start, if garage door starts to get behind that, then that's where, you know, we get into, how would you, how would you deal with that?
Yeah.
Are you doing two doors or one?
Two.
I don't know, do you want to go back and look at it, and re-figure your garage, or? And then come back, or? And the problem is, we're having, is it's got to go back. There's room to make it go back. It's, it's, and we got it, that's, it's kind of... And we know it's not an easy process, regardless, one way or another.
But the house is going back.
Foot. But it can go back more.
Well, the houses that technically go back two feet.
Go back more than two feet. You see what I'm saying? There's more room that you could go back, and, and if you worked it right somehow. That's why I'm asking if you want to go back and reconfigure the garage, or?
If we move the house up, can you give us variance to move the garage up?
Grants a zoning issue.
That, that's, that's not for this board to decide. No, that's, no.
We're also trying to use the existing foundation area that's already there, disturbed area that's already there, for the most part. By shifting it, now you're...
You tear up the ground, you're not, yeah. I'm sorry on that one. Because you're digging up, you're tearing down a building, digging up a hole in the hole for a foundation. You're not gonna tell me you're not disturbing the whole ground area?
We are disturbing the area, but we're also disturbing what's already previously, in previous, previously disturbed.
What did you, what were you saying, John, just, just one foot?
We can get a foot, I think we should take a foot. But I'm apparently outvoted on that.
Well, you can make a motion.
I just think there's a way to get it back further. And you're gonna disturb the ground either way. You know what I mean?
Oh, I, I know what you mean. I mean, I, I could figure out and move the whole house off the 100-foot mark, and change the whole, but it's not anything I want to buy and do and spend my money on.
No, I understand that.
Figure that out, but, um, I mean, I, as I say, I go back, I was, if you go back a foot, I think I can go back two feet, right? And if we go back two feet, I'll go back to the architect, right? And I'll try to figure out how we're gonna make that work, right? More than two feet, I'm gonna loss, because I'm, you know, we've been at this for a while.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out aesthetically what we were trying to do with the property we have. It's not a, you know, as I say, we tried, originally tried having a smaller house. That was, you know, gonna make it a lot easier. And that didn't work, because of just the livable space that we would have. You know, the reason we're doing this is so, you know, our kids and grandkids can come up on the weekends and spend some time. We don't have to go home every weekend, because it's a, you know, a small camp. That's what it is right now.
After seeing those steps, I'd want to go home.
Well, you guys can do what you want, but Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, uh, application to greatest practical extent for Brian Perry at 668 13th Street, Nacton, uh, with the condition that the building is no closer than 90 feet 8 inches, which is two feet more than the current plan.
Any second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All opposed?
So fails, that motion failed. You guys are gonna figure out what you want to do.
I'd like to see it go back more.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, you need to give the applicant some direction now.
Right, well, I'm trying to... I mean, if you will, you said you were gonna go look back at the garage and try to figure something out there?
Well, that was with the, you know, if I go back two feet, right, from where it's now, it's already two feet back.
Right.
So if I go back a total of four feet, right, from what we're doing, then with that, I'll go figure out what I can do with the garage. If I come back more than what this is, with more than the two feet that this proposed here, then I, I don't know how I can work it, right? Because I think I got enough wiggle room. But as I say, I've tried to do this, and I get too far over there, where it doesn't work. I can't move it this way, I get boxed in there. Moving it this way only makes the matter worse, anything I do.
What's the big deal if you move it that way and get boxed in? I don't understand, like, what, what's your thought? Why are you saying you're gonna get boxed in?
Because of the things I stated before, which is, right now, we come off the driveway, and you're gonna go in the garage, and it's gonna be very consistent with what we have. If you go much further that way, you're gonna change the way we're gonna come in the driveways. That gap that I have between the property lines right now, which there's a fence there, right? That becomes pretty much unusable for me. I don't know what I'm gonna be able to do, boat trail, but so that is basically an alleyway. Like, that's, those are the things that, you know, I've already worked through, and have struggled through, and come back and said, no, this, this, this is the best I can do with the current design. And we've been at this design for over a year.
I think you bring it back down this way, and kick it back. Move the whole thing back. But you move it down here. I don't understand why you're handicapped there, or?
No, but I...
You know, I mean, it's bound up there, it doesn't make sense to me, because you can get ladders back there, you can get a kayak back there, if you move your house over closer to that camping mark.
Yeah, no, so if we do that, but I thought it was in a bigger problem with the 30%. So now I'm, I'm...
Well, I'm, we're not talking about the 30%, we're talking about the 100 feet, right?
Yeah.
I don't...
Because he's trying to shift you backwards, so even if you go, if you go self, self, and then...
Back.
Back. It's kind of what he's trying to...
Yeah, I, I don't know, what, you seem, you did the walk, so, I mean... So yeah, you go this way, so I'm still, so if you go back, so you're basically pulling me back 12 feet? Is that what you're doing?
Down.
I'm moving you over, and then moving you back.
Two feet, shift it way that way.
You're still within your building print, you're still...
You're shifting it down.
No, but I, I'm coming back already two feet from that current line, and you're saying that's not good enough.
But you're...
So the question is, how much further?
Problem is, the house is going back, but your porch is staying where it is. So yes, your main structure is, but you're still getting all that still in front of the 100. The goal from the playing board is to try to get as close as they can to meeting current setbacks. The current setbacks is no structures within 100 feet of the water. That's what they're trying to do right now, is...
So if you shift over, shift back, and you're gonna get out of, out of this, out of more of the 100 foot?
Oh, no, okay, I, I get, no, no, 100% with you. But if you go to the, go to the north, the northwest corner? No, no, keep it by the house, by the house. See the setback, where it's very narrow to the, yeah, go up, then see it's very narrow? So you're now shifting the house back?
That's coming back too. This, you're gonna come down, this is gonna come back the whole...
Oh, you've taken me way back, you've taken...
And you still can have a walkout basin.
So you're saying down two, and then back two?
Yeah, or two, or three. You know, you still can, it still can work.
So how far back are you asking us to come? Because that, just for reference, what I have to come back with, is what you're proposing, is I need to garage line this, right?
No, I get it.
The issue right now is we, there are, there's trees.
Right.
You've got a narrow shot down to the lake, right? When you step out into the, aesthetically, when you're sitting in the, in the family room?
Yeah, but there's no trees here.
No, 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 you, you, bear with me.
Yeah.
So aesthetically, we're talking aesthetically, this lake house has a narrow chute of waterfront. I think you saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you shift the whole house over this way, my view is, the whole design changes, because I now have to fix, change all the windows to line up with the water view is now. So that's gonna be a redesign. I gotta go figure out what that looks like, and what that's possible.
Yeah, so you probably haven't seen the view, you should have been read, read the whole thing.
But you know, it's great, it's great here. So that, but I didn't need to know what the ask is, right? Because if the expectation is I'm coming 100% off the 100 feet, I, 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 like, because I, as I say, with the, if I come additional two feet, right, I could kind of play with that, right? Because I, we're unboxed in. But I need to know, am I coming, if you're asking me to come back five, right? Today I'm going back to the architect. That, that is clear, right? With two feet, with any changes to go accommodate this?
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the site plan, Jason?
Yes.
That way your garage kind of stays the same. You're gonna open up that little space to a bit bigger, if you shift just the house and move back.
No, no, I, 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 because I totally understand what you're talking about. And, but the design of the house is designed so that when you're looking out...
Right, you get the lake.
You're looking down at the water. And so what now, we're gonna be looking at trees. So I'm gonna have to change the design of that house to figure out how I get to maintain that view.
Right.
Right?
It's like going to Fenway Park.
So if I were to put a foundation underneath this house, right? It's sagging, folks who went, if I were to put a foundation underneath this house?
You still go for greatest practical extent?
You still go for greatest practical extent?
Yeah. Because anytime you add concrete to the ground, if it's within, so... Yes, because your foundation's in front of the 100. If a foundation wasn't in front of the 100, and you were just dealing with your, your portrait staying there, yes, you would go...
Well, I mean, there are frost posts throughout the whole front of the deck. There was concrete frost posts, right, throughout the whole front.
So anytime you add concrete structures within the 100 feet, it is, it triggers greatest practical extent.
So in order to take down the deck and put a concrete, anything, yeah.
It would trigger, it would trigger that. And I've had people come into my office for just, they wanted to put an extremely small addition on their house, but it was in front of 100, and they, yeah, they didn't wanna deal with the greatest practical extent either. So they figured out a different way to do it. So I think what some of the board members are struggling with, Brian, is so, like, for right now, I just, I just showed it to your consultant. Factors that prevent the structure from meeting current setbacks, alright? So roadside setback finding, there, you meet your, you have plenty of roadside setback. Other structures, is existing set, system, historical structure, slope or grade, potential soil erosion, well, ledge, amount of vegetation that would be, you know, impacted. So that's what I think some of these, a couple of the board members are struggling with on why this can't meet current setbacks or get closer to the current setback. Am I right by saying that, or am I...
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
But I'm still not clear, so is the expectation, I'm gonna come back here with 100% of that behind 100 feet? Because I...
How much would you wanna take it back?
So what's he gonna go back? The main structure is got, is what, six feet off?
Uh, looks like it's, the main structure is four feet behind, in front of the 100. The porch is eight feet currently right now.
But it's gonna, but it's gonna go to 10.
Right.
The porch is staying where it is, the house is going back two feet. It's gonna, that porch is gonna grow.
Okay, so it's gonna grow on that side.
I don't know if it's east or west, but, westerly, yeah. I should've looked at the north.
So it's 88.8 from the, from the lake?
Currently it's 88.8, yeah, from the lake. Uh, and it's gonna, and there, we're hoping for it to stay 88.8 from the corner of that porch, but the house was gonna go back, um, two feet off its current footprint to grow that porch to 10 feet instead of eight.
Well, the other thing is too, is that moving it down and then moving it back, is one of the things you guys were concerned about was ground disturbance, is you're gonna, you're not gonna have to take out part of that brick patio and that stairway.
Oh, yeah.
No, it was only told the corner was coming out by a...
Yeah.
Wow.
It was only a corner, Luke, or whoever his name is.
We gotta come at least four feet off.
I mean, the front lock is coming out?
Well, they're gonna have to remove, if they're gonna put a foundation in, that patio is gonna get just destroyed.
So if you shifted away from there?
I mean, what's a number we're comfortable with? It's not even, it's not really our role to figure out how to achieve it, or what...
Right.
Right.
Or what, you know, he's, he's willing to do, but it's our job to figure out what we're comfortable with.
What are you thinking for a, you got a number you wanna, oh?
You know, I, the, the goal is 100.
Right.
100 is probably not reasonable. I, I think, based on what you guys are saying, you should tell the applicant to go back and work the design to give us as many feet as possible away from 88.8. Can we extend that one, two, four feet, whatever? Looking at his overall design to include the house, the garage?
So basically to work with the architect and come back with a best and final?
Yeah, because clearly the board...
Right.
Some of the board isn't, isn't willing right now, for good reasons. I mean, there is room to go back. But I think, to move this lawn, Chris, I think that's what you need to do.
Right.
If you, if you try to arbitrarily come up with a number, I think that's gonna be...
You need a motion on that?
I don't think you need a motion, I think you need to give direction to the... You denied the...
Well, we didn't deny anything.
It was voted down, the proposal to approve it.
With a condition?
What did they say? To me it's down, but whatever, over two feet and two more feet to the road. Is that acceptable? If you're saying go south, then it goes south. It was over two more feet? And then it's...
Well, I think that's what they, they made a motion to do something, to move it back two feet, and it failed.
No, my motion was to put two feet.
Two feet back, but I didn't make a motion of two feet south, so if we go two and two?
Uh, my motion is based on how close you are to the pond.
Okay.
Right, and so, right now at 88 feet, my motion was to get you at 90.8 feet.
We'd just be guessing at how much.
Right, we would've left if we went two feet back, two feet to the south.
Just guess.
That's what I'm saying, we'd have, we'd have to see that.
I think that would be the best thing to do, is sit down with him, or, why I forgot the other fellow's name?
Why, the architect too, he is.
And try to get it up.
That, that may be an option, we would just have to see where it would land.
I'm just saying, that's what you were asking, to go south, so if we go two feet and then move it two more than what I proposed, which is get the four, is that acceptable? Then we can, if we have to, move the garage.
So you're saying your closest point would then be 92.8?
Well, we don't know, we don't know that.
We're guessing it, that's the problem.
We don't know where that would landed exactly to that, to that line.
It almost looks like that concrete, this is, your measurement's gonna stay pretty, pretty well close to where it is right now, looking at the contour of the waterfront.
What was that? I just missed that whole thing.
If you were to go shift south two feet, you're not gonna affect your, your distance from the water too much. If you look at the, how, what it's...
I don't know, I'm gonna go back. I think you should sit down and try to rework it or something, try to get some more of it out of there. That's the best I can give you. What do you think, Adam?
I, I know it's frustrating, um, but, like, within the parameters that, that Jason spoke about, you know, you do have a room to move it, okay? It, it's not, it's not, um, easy, it's not the way you wanna do it, we understand that. But I think what you need to do is, is you need to go back and make some concessions and moving it south a little bit, and then also moving it back, and seeing what you can work with, and then come back to us.
I almost wish I was within the 75 in existing structure. It would've been easy, right? Because I can't move it up the hill, right? Right, we would've added a different conversation. It's a bit frustrating to be one of the most conforming on this street in the years, but I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Alright, uh, new business, Matlack, uh, Nason Road, map 230 lot 005-002. Conditional use application for storage of rental equipment.
Uh, so this property is owned by James and Elizabeth Kittredge, but they have, he has written consent as a lease agreement, um, to use that property, and we believe, did we add that to this? Yes, we did. It's more of just a letter of authorization to speak on that land right now.
You wanna just get these guys on speed, what you're gonna be doing there and stuff, please?
So I'm just looking for a, a landing area for, uh, we have equipment rental, uh, skids, stairs, mini excavators, smaller stuff, chippers. Um, so we're just looking for a landing area for that stuff, um, and a small shed just for power and storing smaller compacters, generators, stuff like that, smaller stuff.
So would you be expanding the existing clearing?
Nope. Not cutting any trees, just planning on going in there with a, a moat, with the area that's there. It already has a driveway entrance with a gate. It was a log landing, so they had to gait it off. It's already been flattened and cleared. It's just the area that they put on that is what the cleared area is on that plan.
Any permanent footings or anything for the shed, or just...
This is a, um, so you missed the last meeting, he came in for a, just like a consultation, just to see where we wanted to go with it. Uh, this is just temporary, so he's looking just, um, he's, he's currently seeking out other properties, so this is just a, um, a place to store until he can find something else. It's not a...
Like a five-year plan?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not meant to be there forever, it's just, um...
To get out of my house for a...
Yeah, he lives in a subdivision, and he has, they have regulations in that subdivisions which don't allow him to do what he's doing.
Gotcha.
So he's, he, this land is owned by one of his, um, his good friends, and they let him use it if, if the board allows it. Did I sum that up for you, Matt?
Yep.
No problem, appreciate it, thank you.
This is in the transit, the lot, the, the clearing is in the transition district?
Did you find anything, John?
He is proposing a, um, a small, uh, 10 by 20 shed?
What, um, use are you, in the use chart, are you...
Um, the only... The only way I can go with it, because you got the building, is professional businesses and services having less than 2,500 square feet of gross floor. Other than that, the only way I can go with something would be storage.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, but we have stor...
We don't have, that's the problem, we don't have a storage, but we have, um...
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Those are, they either fell into I or J?
Which is our, yeah, uses which are similar to conditional uses.
Okay, yeah, I, that's conditional use. And the property's bigger than two acres, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's 10...
20.
20?
Okay.
Uh, he can't, that property's, most of that property is encompassed with, um...
Small.
Resource protection.
Not where he is.
No, no, a little corner of that landing goes into the resource protection, but he's aware of it and is not gonna go within there.
Where is that corner?
Um, you see the blue, the...
Where the proposed shed is?
Yeah, the blue hatch line?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is your resource...
Okay.
Dotted line. I should've had a, sorry, I don't have a digital copy, I would've...
And the shed's far enough away from that?
The shed is far enough away from it, and the shed is far enough away from the road to, yep.
How far from, the wetland there is the shed?
Oh, it's outside, so you, you could put the shed right on that, the corner of it can be on the blue, blue dotted line, blue, because that's your buffer, you can't go any close to that.
Oh, that's the buffer?
That's the buffer.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So that's, so that's outlining what he can't touch.
Yep.
And what he can, where he can use, but he's only using that green, you know, that, it shows the proposed private outdoor storage area, that's what he's looking to do.
Yep.
But, um, if you look, that blue hatch line, all the way, it shows your perimeter lines, so he's meeting all his setbacks for that shed.
Gonna have power to the shed?
That's the plan, yep, there's a pole right in front.
Any issues with the access, traffic access off of Nason Road?
Yeah, it's a pretty, um, and you're only expecting, you know, a, he's, what do you do? You probably use one piece of equipment a day, or?
Yeah, I mean, in a yearly basis, over a year, we might add a car a day, because, you know, our busier times, there might be three to five cars, but for four months in the winter, there's none. So...
It's not gonna really impact.
It's, it's smaller equipment, you say, like skids?
Yep, yep, everything is under 10,000 pounds.
Okay, alright.
The heaviest thing we have is like 9,000 pounds.
And all your stuff is done online, it's more of, it's just gonna be a storage spot, pick up and drop off?
Exactly.
Maintenance is done at other shops, not on the property? Same thing with fluid changes?
Yep.
And things like that, correct?
Yep.
So no storage of fuels or...
Nope, we fuel them up at Boonies.
Okay.
Yep.
So he's sitting there with fuel in him potentially?
Mm-hmm.
So catastrophic?
We'll have a spill kit there, that's, intention with that shed is to keep that kinda stuff inside that shed.
Okay. And that's, that entrance way is gated currently, you said?
Yeah, it is, yep. It's actually got rocks and gate. I'd, I'd open, move some of the rocks, but that's all I'd be doing.
But it's lockable, secureable, to prevent...
Yep, it is.
Yes, okay.
So this shows, this kinda shows you what's there. A few years ago, I'm pretty sure this Google Maps is not current. But that landing is already cleared, and his discussion with me was that he just wants to bush hog that area, he's not gonna bring gravel in or anything like that, he just wants to mow it.
Yeah, it's already got a good driveway.
So he's not disturbing anything other than parking the equipment on it. And that was a, that was a logging landing?
Yep.
In its previous time.
Should we do a site walk? We haven't scheduled that, right?
We haven't done anything, so you got a site, you can, you can schedule a site walk in a, in a public hearing. The, um, and then we, yeah, I can't count on the, uh, newspaper article passing, but that's going in front of the town on the tent.
Yeah, so we got to plan it?
Plan, I'd rather plan ahead than...
Yeah. So when could we do the public hearing, if we make a motion today?
Um, it would, so you do your site walk and then you do it in the first week in August?
July?
July, right, because I don't have, I won't have ten days in circulation right now. I need, I need to have a ten days in circulation, um, so I would have to do it for the first week in August, or first, first week in July, sorry.
Do you want to do the site walk on the fifteenth, seventeen hundred? Yeah? Or eleven AM is fine with me. Good try. And then that would make the, uh, public hearing on the sixth of July? Hey, yeah. Like, that gives, if we do that, it gives Jason time to do it?
Yeah.
Got it scheduled?
Yeah, we've been doing it right away, so we'll, we'll post it online tomorrow and then we'll send it to the paper so that, tomorrow, so that they have it on record, so that they know that we need it, you know, a certain timeframe, but...
Well, I moved that, uh, we conduct a site walk, uh, for Matlak at the Nason Road property, map two thirty, lot zero zero five zero zero two, um, on June fifteenth at five o'clock. And we schedule the public hearing for six o'clock on July sixth. All in favor?
We need a second.
Oh, you need a second?
I'll sign that.
All in favor? Adam?
Um...
Nobody named Steen?
Yeah, why?
Uh, he's, uh...
You're an employee?
Yes. That's why I signed up for the eleven o'clock site walk.
Alright, cool.
But I did hear, repeat that at the site walk?
I think so.
Yeah, and then after the, he'll be the first thing on the agenda after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Alright.
Awesome. Thanks, guys, Matt.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, you too. Alright, next up would be James Wood, one 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 Yeton Lane, map two three three, lot zero three five, conditional use for ground-mounted solar array. Is it going? So is this a sun chaser, one? Is it going to follow the sun?
Uh, no, it'll be just solid. It looks like steel frame.
Um, I didn't, did you include it in their packets or not? I did include in your packet, it's more, and I can, if you guys want to, I'll give it, I'll send you home with one, but it's more of just a installation guide, it's really not giving you much on, um, if you guys want it. Are they using the ground screws with this one, the helical piles?
Yes.
So you're going to have a little disturbance?
This is personal use?
Yes.
So you're planning on putting it right here in this corner?
Well, I can point it out exactly to you if you'd like. There's a, an old shed here, that, that'll basically go right there.
So no trees are coming down or?
No trees are coming down, no, sir. It's all clear.
Not visible from the road?
Nope.
You're tucked away pretty good?
Not even, I don't think it will really be visible to my neighbors either.
Yeah.
Maybe in the wintertime.
So it's, um, are these ground-mounted?
Yes, ground screws.
Okay. And how many panels? Do we have anything on that actually?
I think it's sixteen? Yeah, sixteen.
Yeah, residential ground-mounted solar array with sixteen panels, four hundred ninety watts, and one by six inverter, one by six thousand.
The same thing, Mr. Chairman, go see it, schedule a meeting. Can we do two, um, public hearings and?
Yeah, yeah, um...
What do you still, yeah? Same thing.
Yeah, you do the one public hearing, it's, usually do them first off, I mean, did you want to do a public hearing and then deal with applicant or do, and then do a public hearing, or you want to do two public hearing, one after another? And then deal, one after another?
Yeah. You know, I don't suspect they're very controversial, I, I think we could do one after another. Yeah, I feel good with that.
Okay. And site walk at four thirty?
Yeah. I'll see you there, right?
Right.
Yeah. And okay, I propose, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to conduct a site walk, um, at one 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 Yeton Lane, tax map two thirty-three, lot zero thirty-five, at four thirty on, what did I say, nine, June, is that right?
No.
Fifteenth?
Fifteenth and the sixth.
Fifteen, June, and additionally conduct the public hearing at, following the, uh, initial town hearing that day. At approximately six thirty. Should I get a?
Second that?
All in favor? All opposed? That's it. I'll see you on the, there you go, fifteen?
Yeah, on fifteenth, they'll be at your property at four thirty, uh, for the site walk, just to get a visual of it.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a gentleman here who has a question, he wanted to talk to you guys about possible, he just want to see where you, where to go forward with it. You?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dennis Stias. I bought, uh, a house on Sam Page Road back in February, um, love to fish, met with Brian Beatles running Beatles tackle store, found that his dad was really sick and they would be selling the business in the fall. Um, Brian told me that he is paying a thousand dollars a month rent, that being said, if I bought the business, I'd have to come up with twelve thousand dollars a year before I would begin to make a profit. My question is, could I put that business on my property? I just took some photographs, I'm sorry.
There's six of you, I thought there was five.
Oh, that's okay, I'll make it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll go through them if you'd like, gentlemen.
The first is just my home and the arrow showing the, uh, apparently when they, when they did a lot of work on this house, it was an old farmhouse they redid, they cut this road in the back and they, I guess brought a lot of fill, that, uh, I'm thinking would be a great, uh, driveway for the, for the actual tackle store. And then the second picture, the third is showing, I would have to do a little brush cutting and of course some excavating in the back of the property to do that. The big tree, I would like to leave, um, almost have like a rotary going around for the exit for the parking, yes, yes, sir. I don't know if you can see my handwriting, the area I was looking at was ninety-three feet wide by a hundred and three feet, uh, or, excuse me, one oh three wide by ninety-three, uh, long. Had some, uh, water in the basement, so I paid to have a French drain put in the property, that's the machine you see on the property. And then, um, little bit of the, uh, the plot plan there showing in my little sketch of, of where the business would be, and then the last page is the, uh, building I'd like to propose to, to put on that, uh, said property, sir. And I was just finding out if it's something feasible that could happen.
What district is it in?
He's in the village. So if you go back to the, what we're just, what we were just talking about, professional and businesses services having less than twenty-five hundred square feet of gross floor area, that brings them into conditional use, other than that, I don't, he's not...
It's a tackle shop?
Tackle shop.
Uh, yes, sir, bait and tackle.
And what are you thinking for approximate square footage of the building?
Uh, thirty by, the, the last page shows the, uh, building, um, proposing to, to put on that property.
Okay.
Thirty by thirty would be nine hundred square feet. I, uh, did the square footage with Brian Beatles, he has approximately six hundred and eighty-three, but it's very tight in there, so I was hoping for nine to open it up a little bit. Like two, two of the aisles, you, uh, two people can't even walk down, you got to kind of one at a time.
Got you.
The, would, what would you do, I see parking, are you going to, what's the parking plan, parking spaces, pave, gravel?
I would probably do gravel, sir. Actually, the, uh, gentleman that did the excavating in the French drain, there was probably two or three yards of gravel left over, and he, I probably should have snapped a picture, he finished today, and he, that proposed driveway, he took it and laid that, uh, uh, extra there today.
Pretty open along there, any issue for getting in and getting out, traffic-wise?
It's all wide open.
Yeah, it's a straight shot, brick shot.
Conditional use?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree, I don't, you know, we don't have a specific...
Right.
...tackle shop, bait shop called out, but, um... Did you be storing, uh... Would you be storing any boats there, like Beatles does?
No, sir.
Okay, sorry.
Bait and tackle and Brian was saying, like, the, uh, the, uh, the rafts that they tow, they put those out front in the summertime and they sell the heck out of them.
Right.
But no, 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 sir, no boats.
Alright.
Any restroom or anything inside it?
I'm sorry?
Any restroom or anything?
Uh, do I need to? I, I, I don't know, in a retail building, do you need to have a restroom?
It's a good question.
I mean, if I need to, I would definitely conform to that, of course.
Do you, do you mean, operate in the winter as well for?
I'm sorry, sir?
You'd operate in the winter as well for bait, for?
My, I, my idea would be to, uh, Wednesday through Sunday, uh, six in the morning till two in the afternoon, uh, Monday and Tuesday off, because I like to fish too, and maybe take a month off between your, your fall season and before the ice is enough to icefish?
Alright.
Just to have some me time?
Yeah.
That was my, my, my idea.
Any fly fishing equipment?
Yes, sir, there is. I'm, I'm basically not buying Brian's business, but buying all Brian's stock.
Okay. Let's see, they get a real...
You can make some lures, Chris.
I do make my own lures.
Oh, not the ones at the trading, plus selling out of the bottle cast, are they?
Uh, no, I was, I moved from Nantucket and I actually do soft plastics and I do, uh, lead, everything from jig heads to like cod fishing stuff?
Yeah.
And I powder coat the lead and the soft plastics, I have injection machines, I probably have, I would say forty to fifty soft plastic molds, everything from little like rubber jigs to like striped bass, big, it's fun. When I was in Nantucket, I had a carpentry and caretaking business, I took care of thirty-one homes and did all the maintenance myself, and I was still making ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year selling the tackle, to, to the tackle stores.
So we follow in the conditional use, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, so I just wanted to run it by you guys before I had him do some legwork.
Of course, surveying, excavation, things like, yes, sir. And of course I would come back to the board with an actual definitive design, you know, where the building's going to be, when I get all that in, in order. I just didn't want to go spend a bunch of money and then have you gentlemen say no.
Portage on the work, too.
Well, just because I don't know if it would, yeah, affect his subject.
Way down to put in your subject again if it came, what a portage on.
Well, it depends on what's on there, though, because it's not a bedroom, so you don't need, um, doesn't need, so right now you need ninety gallons per day per bedroom, because that's, they're, they're expecting showers, tubs, dishes, this is, I think it's like twelve gallons per day, so he could, might be, even be able to do a small expansion, a minor expansion on his system.
You know, I, I don't know.
Right.
This is just pure conjecture, but I would think if you have food or drink, you have to have a head.
Yeah.
But if you don't...
Right.
I don't think you have to.
No, I was thinking possibly opening up that, or, our, having a coffee bar, and, but if that's a no-no, then no, and I did want to have an ice machine, but no, no food per se.
Like a, a coffee bar, like, just come in and grab a cup of coffee, like?
Basically like a Keurig?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
So your buddy's coming over, sitting down, like they do at Beagle's right now?
Oh, yes, 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 sir, exactly.
You're not selling your coffee, you're losing money.
Fishing story.
Yeah, not, not really like the whole coffee, but you get a cup of coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No eye openers or anything like that?
No, sir.
Well, if you want to come back in the office tomorrow, I'll give you, uh, just the, just the application pretty much and, and give you some other stuff.
Sure, what, what time, sir? I do have a ferryer coming over at nine for my horse, but other than that...
I should be there most of the day tomorrow, yeah, so, uh...
I'm there, three to the fourth of the day.
Yeah, he can, he can assist you too. Okay. So...
Yeah, get that filled out and back to Jason, alright?
Huh?
Get it filled out and back to you.
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll get you in front of the board whenever you're ready and get this moving forward for you.
Awesome, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. I'm terribly sorry about the phone, I was waiting to hear back from my, my, about the exam and, uh, one of my knucklehead friends sent me a stick.
It was, it was well timed, it was well timed, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Alright, so I have one more question for you guys, I was asked to present you with. I have a, uh, we have a subdivision on, is it Canal Road? Canal, or, yeah, I don't know, it's right as you go on to...
Canal Road.
Is it New Bridge? You see the New Bridge, so you're heading down across from Horn Pond, anyway, there's a, there's a, already an approved three, thirteen lot subdivision, has not been built upon, all the infrastructures in there, the roads, uh, guardrails, everything like that. Um, the original plan was set forth for a fifty-five and older community, um, that, that was the set, that was the standard that was asked, and the reason that was because that is exempt for growth permits. So, this was just purchased by a new landowner, new developer, and he was looking to see if he could come into the board and have that, that condition... and he was looking to see if he could come into the board and have that, that condition amended to just not be 55 and older. And so it would just be amend them to, to the plan. And I just was like, oh, I'll just present it to the board and see what they say.
Is an existing subdivision?
It's an existing subdivision approved in like 2013.
You have it on the map?
I just closed out.
Trying to think where the hell it is.
I know, that's why you're...
I know that area.
Also, if it, if we, it's approved and not acted on in some period of time, it's, it's no longer approved. It's gotta be...
Uh, it has been worked on. It has been worked. So there, if you go there, it's all paved. It just, they haven't developed it. Um, the, the, um...
The only one I can think of is...
No, it's, it's, it's still fine. I can...
The only thing I can think of was, was Mount, is Mountain View off of, uh, Newbridge.
Yeah, uh, no, 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 no.
Newbridge is the one that goes down between Canal and Horn Pond, right?
Yes.
It's on, um...
That long a road.
This one. This is, here's your subdivision, all these lots.
Oh, oh, that's, uh...
Yes. So I know exactly, I know it's, it's completely fine to be built on. Um, it is owned by a...
Oh, okay.
So yes, this is, and this, these roads are in there and, and this is here. There's a giant guard, um, culvert with guardrails in here. Lots are already done. It is an approved division. Um, but like I said, it was, um, a 55 and older, so he's looking to have that condition amended or am, uh, removed.
That's the one that goes up the hill there on the left as you're going up?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like concrete.
After Wilson and Horn.
Yeah, he's got it like cabled off, the big concrete blocks out there? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I was thinking when you said go past Horn Pond, I'm like...
I was thinking Canal Road.
Oh, I was trying to say Horn Hon, but...
Yeah, it's on, but isn't it owned by the, uh, straight there?
Yeah. It's not owned by him anymore. It was sold.
It was originally.
It was originally owned by, by that individual and is another partner of his.
Right.
Um, and now it has been purchased, um... You guys really want me to say it, don't you?
Kinda, I know.
So Scott McCloud purchased it and he's looking to have a just regular subdivision. I went through the subdivision ordinance, uh, regulations to see if there was anything in the amendment and, um, I'm not familiar with the whole thing. Um, he spoke to, um, the company that surveyed the whole thing and, uh, kinda was just, yeah, no, no big deal. Just have the board amend it, you know? But I needed to, I was like, let me talk to them first.
Well, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving a yea or a nay without looking at the original, what's been approved.
We'll do that. I will, uh, I'll talk to him and we'll, I'll have him come into the next meeting and, uh...
And I, you know, I think Gavin is our resident
Yeah.
site plan expert. I wouldn't be comfortable unless he...
I'll reach out to, um, the planner that we've used. I'll reach out to Mr. Arl. I'll chew his ear on this one.
That's probably a good idea.
And, uh, see what he has to say and, um, I'll ask him to.
Were they involved back then on it?
No, I can see if there was something made planning maybe. I'll look in the folder and see what was there, what was approved, um...
I would.
Yeah.
I can almost...
So I'll do, I'll do some research, more some research for you guys too. I wasn't expecting, I told him I'd ask the question, but I wasn't expecting, um, uh, not Gavin not being here and Pat not being here. It would've helped.
That was put in.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked to see if there was anything in there. It just talks about waivers, but everything's about application process.
How many years ago was that put in?
I think it was 2013 is what I was told. Yeah.
This is my first note on waivers. It's not uncommon.
Yeah, well, it's not a waiver because the waiver's kinda asking you, okay, let's waive sprinkler systems or something like that. So when I spoke to the, the original owner of this property, that's exactly what he told me is why they went 55 and older was because it was exempt from growth permits. And at the time, when this was approved, there was people standing in line to get growth permits.
That's why they were...
And so going 55 and above, he didn't have to do that.
Growth permit meaning over the 35 or whatever?
Yeah, so when, when they start, first started doing growth permits around this time of approval, um, people, they would be gone in the first week, you know, because people, or the first day or something like that, because people were camping out. You had Eagle Trace going, you had other, you know, growth permits for people in the lake, um, remodeling, um, not remodeling, but tearing down and removing, making us seasonal dwelling to a year-round dwelling.
But don't we still have that issue?
No. No, I didn't use, I used 34 last year, all year.
Right, but isn't the cap 35?
35, but we not, it's not...
We're only at eight right now.
Yeah, it's not like it used to be. Like, so people used to come in and just get them all at once.
The first day of the year.
Yeah.
They used to sleep out in camps and shit like that.
Yeah, no, I've, I've heard some stories from people who actually stayed out in the parking lot overnight to do it.
As long, some of them camped out for like a week or two before...
Yeah, that's just, I'm sorry.
How many lots are there?
13, I believe. Um, this lot, I believe is supposed to be, I was talking to the, the current owner, I think this one's supposed to be a tennis court or something like that.
Is the water still?
Or one of them is supposed to be a tennis court. Huh?
Is that water still in there?
Yeah, there's a giant culvert that goes across here, um, but...
Impacts where they can build on those lots. Yeah, I mean, I, I'll look at the subdivision thing.
Yeah, I'll do that and then I'll make some calls tomorrow, um, and have some discussion.
Yeah, it'd be good if we could see what's in the file, the approved file.
So those aren't, these aren't considered, there's, yes, there's, there are body of water there, but they're not considered in our map.
No stream?
Nope. I, uh, I clicked on the overlay for streams, rivers, shoreline, resource protection, flood plain, wetland buffers, and you just have the wetland buffer from, um, where the Horn Pond dam is, that little... This right here is non-buildable. Um, this is all common space and walking trail down to the water where people have, can launch kayaks, like, is what I was told. So what I'll do is I'll make some phone calls on it tomorrow and go from there. And we'll bring it back up.
Can't believe it was 2013. It seems so much longer. Jeez, I'm finally having fun, I guess, in life. I thought it was in there longer than that. What's that? Sorry, I thought it was in there longer than that, but... Might've missed some years of my life sometime. So you're gonna bring him in too?
Uh, I haven't quite figured it out. I gotta look at the agenda, but I, I just wanna get some answers so I can figure out how to proceed with him. And that's why I was asking you guys. I wasn't sure if anybody would be familiar with that.
Well, I think if, if there was something in the file we could look at.
Yep.
And we can look at this and Gavin comes at the next meeting. I think we could have a, a more definitive discussion.
Yep.
Alright, I think that's it. 4:00.
Bless you.
That it? Alright, Mr. Chairman, I move with your drone.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.